Good evening. My name is Brandon Monk and I serve as Chair of the Frederick County School Board. Today is Tuesday, September the 12th. It's a little after 6:00 PM and I will call our meeting to order. We have an agenda before us. Any questions or amendments to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor of the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we have an agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the County School Board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following: to review and discuss administrative appointments — information only — resignations and substitutes pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A1, and to review and discuss individual student matters that would involve specific students and particular information contained in their scholastic records, including requests for release from compulsory attendance for religious reasons pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A2, and to review and discuss easement concessions that would involve the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of the governmental unit would be adversely affected pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A6.
And we have a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion's been properly seconded to go into closed session for the reasons that the Vice Chair mentioned. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll reconvene approximately 7:00 PM.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board reconvene from closed session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that the Board reconvene from closed session. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are reconvened.
Mr. Chairman, I move that to the best of each Board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed session, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the School Board.
Second.
Motion's been properly seconded to certify our closed session. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
We have two motions coming out of closed session. I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the Superintendent.
Second.
Motion's been properly seconded to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the Superintendent. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I move to approve the release of students A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H from compulsory attendance for religious reasons.
Second.
Motion's been properly seconded to approve the release of the students that the Vice Chair mentioned from compulsory attendance for religious reasons. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Please join me in a moment of silence, and we'd like to do this this evening in memory of those who lost their lives on September 11th. Thank you. Next, please join me in a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the consent agenda. Board members have seen the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion's been properly seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the time for our student and staff recognition. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Hummer, Superintendent of Schools.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening and welcome to our Awards of Excellence program. Before we proceed, I would like to ask that everyone stay here through the entire program out of respect for each individual who is going to be recognized. Once we have completed all of the presentations, we will give you an opportunity to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. In addition, when you come forward for your certificate or to be acknowledged as a school, please take a moment to pause with me and Mr. Monk for a photograph. Then move to your right, remain at the front, and we'll take a photo of the entire group being recognized.
The following students from Robert E. Ailer and Frederick County Middle Schools competed in the 97th State FFA Convention at Virginia Tech held in June. FFA is an intercurricular student organization for those interested in agriculture and leadership. If we could have from the food and fiber team of Frederick County, they were a second-place team, Delaney Newcomb, and she also placed second-place high individual. Colton Anderson was also 10th-place high individual. From Robert E. Ailer Middle School, food and fiber first-place team, Dennis Hart, also a fourth-place high individual. For the Quiz Bowl, third-place team, Ella Doctorero, she also was tied for fourth-place high individual. Then for the Small Companion Animal Care Contest, Morgan Scruggs, 10th place.
Well, I for one want to acknowledge all the hard work that goes into not only doing everything throughout the school day, right? You've got all that to take care of, especially over the summer, but also taking some time to learn skills that are going to be valuable for you all in the workplace as you transition out of school, once you get to high school and graduate. And so that's what we're all about here at Frederick County Public Schools, who want to acknowledge the teachers and the supporters and volunteers and coaches who spent time over the summer in developing and working with these young people to develop skills and memories and experiences that are going to last a lifetime. So, one more round of applause for our students. All right. Dr. Hummer, we'll move to our next component and then we'll release you all after this one, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right. So we have a couple administrative assignments that we want to recognize this evening. First, if Tara Hakowski doesn't mind coming up to the podium, please. So this is our new Director of Media and Communications. She comes from Faulkeer County Public Schools and she brings 25 years of communication experience. She has a BA in Foreign Service and International Politics with a minor in Japanese from Penn State University, as well as an MA in Educational Technology Leadership from George Washington University. So we're very excited to have her and welcome.
Chairman Monk, members of the Board, and Dr. Hummer, thank you so much for this opportunity. I can't wait to get started working with our media and communications team and really the entire FCPS community to really spotlight the amazing things going on in Frederick County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, I would like to call up Mr. Logan Shepherd, please. Mr. Logan Shepherd is our new Director of Transportation. He is an internal hire and he's transitioned from an Assistant Director of Student Support Services. Prior to his role in the Student Support Services, Mr. Shepherd was an Assistant Principal at Charando High School for seven years. Additionally, he has had six years of teaching experience. He has a Bachelor of Science in Kinesiology, excuse me, and a Master of Arts — that's a mouthful there — in teaching from James Madison University, as well as a Master's in Educational Leadership from George Mason University. Welcome, Mr. Shepherd.
So, Dr. Hummer, Chairman Monk, members of the Board, thank you for this opportunity. I'm very excited to get started and joining the team at Transportation. I know we have a great team over there already in place. I'd like to also thank Calvin Davis. Calvin has been the interim director for about two months, and he's done a fantastic job. So I'm ready to join him and looking forward to it. So, thank you.
Next, I would like to call up Mr. Tim Grant, please. Welcome, our new Director of Technology. He is coming from Warren County Public Schools and has over 18 years of experience. He has experience in music and instructional technology teaching, as well as he's served as the Director of Technology since 2016 in Warren County, and he now joins Frederick County Public Schools as the Director of IT. Mr. Grant has a BM in Music Education from Radford University and a Master's in Educational Leadership from James Madison University. So, welcome, Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer, Chairman Monk, Board. Appreciate the opportunity to come work for Frederick County Public Schools, and I got the chance to meet with a lot of my team today, which was fantastic, and I've met with them before, some of them before, as we were working together with Warren County Public Schools, and I know I'm joining an amazing team, so I'm just super excited to get started. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to call up Dr. Kaitlin Jordan, if you don't mind coming on up to the podium, please. Kaitlin Jordan joins us as our new Executive Director of Policy and Legal Services. She currently serves as the Senior Assistant County Attorney in Warren County since 2019. She brings nine years of experience in practicing law in the state of Virginia, in addition to a Bachelor's Degree in Political Science from Francis Marion University. Mrs. Jordan holds a Juris Doctorate from Regent University, and we're very lucky to have found you, so welcome to Frederick County.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. I am really looking forward to this opportunity. I am — it is an honor to be here with you tonight. I really look forward to being able to serve Frederick County and working with Dr. Hummer as well as the rest of the executive staff and with you as well. So, thank you very much.
Last but not least, Mr. Chair, I'd like to call up Emily Headley, please, if you're walking up here now. She is our new ELL Supervisor, and we're very excited to have her. She brings 18 years of experience, of teaching experience, and three years of administrative experience, and she will be joining Frederick County Public Schools here in a couple weeks. She has a Bachelor's Degree in English from the University of Virginia and a Master's Degree in International Education from George Washington University. Very, very thankful to have you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. I'm so thankful to be here. Thank you, Dr. Angelo and your team, for being kind during the interview process. And I am happy to return to Frederick County. I graduated from Charando, and now I get to see everything from a different perspective. So I'm looking forward to building common language with all of you, and thank you so much.
That is all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. I want to open it up to Board members for comments on our student and staff recognition and administrative assignments, if there are any.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
I want to say thank you to all the members of the FFA. It's great to have young leaders coming up through the school system and, you know, really being able to showcase their talents to be good members of the community, and, you know, thank you to the parents out there. I know that you guys out there are supporting your students every step of the way, and there's a lot of stuff that goes along with it, long nights, long hours, taking them here, there, and everywhere, so thank you for being that support staff for your children, and if there's anything we can do to help you, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. All right. Just want to echo those comments. I would say welcome to Frederick County Public Schools to Tara, Logan, Tim, Kaitlin, and Emily, quite a full load tonight as well, and we did see a great picture of the Hall of Famer and the accomplishments. It wasn't shared here, so welcome back in a different capacity, Mr. Shepherd. Excited to have you in this new role. So we're excited to work with you and grow with you and lean on your skill sets. Our Board's reviewed some incredible applications and heard about great interviews, and so looking forward to your investment in our students and in our staff. And again, want to echo all of the sentiment, and I know we have FFA here a lot, I think that's because you all do so well, and we've got some great programs here within our community, and so we want to recognize that. I think about just not long ago, I was in the same room with Mrs. Black as my middle school FFA advisor and teacher, in the same seats as you, and so the opportunities are endless for you, and with the hard work and dedication that you have and the support team that is around you here at Frederick County Public Schools. Soak it in and enjoy those memories and experiences. So congratulations. Please take this time, if you'd like, to enjoy the rest of your evening. We'll give you a few minutes here to do a little pause of our meeting. So thank you and congratulations. Wonderful. Appreciate you all giving us some latitude there and allowing those folks to exit and take some pictures outside if they'd like to. We'll return to our regular agenda here, which next I have citizen and staff comments. We have no one on our sign-up sheet. Was there anyone this evening that wanted to speak? All right. With unanimous consent, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is Report of the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Hummer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple items. I also want to welcome all of our new administrators to the Frederick County family, and we're looking forward to all the great things that you're going to be doing for our students, staff, and our community. I think we have a really good group of staff coming onboard, looking forward to seeing what they can do for us. I also want to recognize all of our FFA students that were here and for all of their hard work and their accomplishments. It's always great to see all the wonderful things that all of our students are doing and achieving, and very proud of each and every one of them, and I'm looking forward to recognizing and acknowledging all of our students. With that being said, I participated in the unveiling of our volleyball team at James Wood High School. They won the state championship last year, as you all know, and they were recognized for that this past Thursday, which they also won that game against Hedgesville, and they capped that night off with a win against them. So very, very — doing a very, very great job over there. The last thing that I wanted to mention is yesterday was Patriot Day, National Day of Service and Remembrance, and thanks again to our Board Chair for honoring the moment of silence for those impacted by 9/11 and those events. We remember and honor those who were directly impacted by the events in September 11, 2001, and we also want to recognize and thank for our community heroes, members of the military, veterans, first responders, and other public servants. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. Next, we will move to new business, and the first item on the agenda is the Committee Report, the Instruction Committee Meeting, which was held on August the 24th. Yes? White?
A meeting of the Instruction Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on August 24, 2023. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM, and a copy of the meeting minutes have been provided to each Board Member. During the meeting, Mr. Barb reviewed the status of ninth-grade sports and explained how ninth-grade students are able to play sports and participate with JV athletic teams. Dr. Great House reviewed the gifted plan. Ms. Swager and Dr. Myers provided an update on the Virginia Literacy Act. Ms. Swager reviewed updates and shared the plan does not go into effect until the 2024-25 school year. Ms. Swager and Dr. Myers reviewed the grading coalition update. They provided background for the grading coalition, that regular updates will be provided to Board Members along the way, and the goal is to bring a recommendation to Board Members by March of 2024. Dr. Myers reviewed the student assessments and shared about assessment requirements from the state. She also shared about assessments at the local level. Dr. Myers discussed an assessment committee was being developed to review and reevaluate the current local assessments being used in all grade levels. Dr. William Sandy provided an update for the Child Find Space and shared that the new location for the Child Find Space will be held at Jordan Springs Elementary School. Dr. Hummer shared that Jordan Springs Elementary School is a temporary location and a permanent location is being stopped. The meeting adjourned at 6:00 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the meeting minutes provided to Board Members. Are there any questions from the Board Members about information shared at the Instruction Committee Meeting held on August 24? Seeing no questions, we recommend the full Board approval of the gifted plan.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and properly seconded to recommend, or that the full Board approve the gifted plan for the time outlined in our agenda. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries.
The second recommendation, recommend the full Board approval of the minutes for the Instruction Committee Meeting held on August 24, 2003.
Second.
All right. Motion's been properly seconded to approve the minutes of the Instruction Committee Meeting held on August 24, 2023. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. White. Next on our agenda is the Finance Committee Meeting. Mr. Hester.
The Finance Committee met in the Dr. Melton F. Wright Board Room, Meeting Room, at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on August 31st. The meeting was called to order at 4:01 PM, and a copy of the minutes have been provided to each Board Member. During the meeting, Mrs. Anderson reviewed the FY24 budget document that — and that the document includes a line-by-line budget for the operating fund, and copies will be delivered to the County Administrator's Office for the Board of Supervisors on September 6, 2023. Mrs. Camery reviewed the elementary and secondary emergency relief, SRR3, fund spending. She shared SRR3 funds will cover expenditures through September 30, 2024. There is $6,694,404 remaining. SRR3 funds have been put towards learning loss, mental health, the Armel Elementary School HVAC system and building automation systems. Mrs. Camery reviewed the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, CSLFRF spending. These funds will be cover — will cover expenditures through December 31, 2024. The remaining CSLFRF are $175,177. Ms. Chapman reviewed the Student Activity Fund audit. Nineteen schools did not have any internal control findings, while two schools had one finding each. The combined statements of receipts was $3,898,868.70 and dispersed $3,655,679.31. Ms. Chapman reviewed the FY23 Athletic Financial Report. The number of students participating in middle and high school sports was 2,957 students. The total expenditures for middle and high school sports was $2,330,511.54. School Board funds paid $1,353,631 towards salary and benefits for coaches, athletic directors, services, sporting officials, game travel, and athletic trainers. Student activity funds paid $976,880. Mrs. Seibert reviewed the FY23 financial statements for the Northwestern Regional Educational Programs operating in textbook funds, the private purpose funds, the Consolidated Services Fund, and the Health Insurance Reserve Fund. Mrs. Anderson reviewed the School Capital Projects Fund, the School Construction Fund, the School Debt Service Fund, the School Textbook Fund, the School Nutrition Services Fund, and the School Operating Fund. Mrs. Anderson reported the total school operating fund surplus was $1,056,066, which includes an obligation — an obligated operating surplus of $178,784 and an unobligated operating surplus of $877,282. The unobligated operating surplus represents 0.4% of the FY23 school operating fund. Mrs. Camery discussed possible scenarios for the remaining FY23 unobligated funds. They include an FY24 budget adjustment to the Capital Projects Fund for fire alarm replacements at Apple, Pyridge, Armel, and Stonewall Elementary Schools and the Dow J. Howard Center. If there are enough remaining funds available after these projects are completed, the superintendent recommends adding a fire alarm at Bright Futures at an estimated cost of $58,000. Other considerations include three athletic buses at $200,000, three vans with ramps to transport students at $251,600, and three buses at $420,500. The meeting adjourned at 4:49 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the finance committee meeting held on August 31st? With that, we did have several action items come out of the meeting. First one, recommend the full board approve a budget adjustment to the school operating fund for $178,783.90, which represents the following obligated funds received during FY23 and requested for carry forward into FY24. $20,068.43 for school-based health workforce, $74,961 for advanced computer science education, $11,654.97 for project graduation, $26,816.80 for Virginia-tiered systems of support, $33,984.63 for E-rate, $10,114.57 for school improvement grant, and $1,183.50 for Virginia Star program. And you better not make me repeat that again.
I didn't catch the middle of that, Mr. Hester. All right, we have a motion before us that's been seconded. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Lake, I'm already looking down there. I think you're going to win a roll call vote. Am I correct?
Oh, yeah.
All right, so seeing no discussion, we'll move forward with a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, if you're ready.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes. All right, motion carries.
Okay. Second action item, recommend the full board approve a budget adjustment to the Capital Projects Fund in the amount of $877,282, which represents FY23 remaining unobligated funds for the school operating fund.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve a budget adjustment for the Capital Projects Fund in the amount that Mr. Hester shared. Any discussion? I'll just share that I think the outline there of those projects, because they are safety-related, I think is of high importance. I do appreciate the additional options that were put for us if there are some additional dollars related to student transportation, and so appreciate that consideration should the funds become available, but want to make sure students are safe in the school buildings and think this will help do that. So other discussion for board members before we move to a vote on the budget adjustment?
Just, Mr. Chairman, just echoing your sentiments, I think, you know, leadership has put safety as a priority within the school system, and I really appreciate that. So, thank you.
All right, we'll go to a roll call vote as well, Mr. Lake and Madam Chair, or Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
And Mr. Monk?
Yes. All right, motion carries.
And the third action item, recommend full board approval of the minutes from the finance committee meeting held on August 31, 2023.
Second.
Motion's been properly seconded to approve the minutes from the finance committee meeting held on August 31. Any discussion? All in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Minutes are approved. Next on our agenda is the Personnel Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have that. Personnel Committee met right here, September 7th. We called the meeting to order at 4:00 PM, and all board members have a copy of the minutes. During the meeting, Mrs. Frakely reviewed the vacancy status of professional vacancies, teacher vacancies, support vacancies as of August 25, 2023. She also shared that on August 25, 2023, 282 teaching vacancies, 12 administrator vacancies, and four other professional vacancies have been filled this year. Ms. Donilon provided details of the substitute appreciation day, which is going to be held on November 17 of this year, and the status of the substitute positions. Mrs. Donilon provided an update for recruitment and retention and upcoming recruitment fairs. She also stated that Frederick County Public Schools Teacher Career Fair will be held March 9, 2024. Mrs. Etcheverria and Mrs. Post provided details of how CTE helps with retention and recruitment of staff. They provided information about the Grow Your Own program and working with the community organizers, as well as information about licensure. Mrs. Frakely provided information about the pathway into various positions in Frederick County Public Schools, as well as the application process. She shared information about incentive initiatives for retention and recruitment, and we adjourned the meeting at 4:52. Additional details regarding the information covered at the meeting are included in the minutes, which the board members have, and if there are, are there any questions from the board members about what was discussed at the Personnel Committee meeting held on September 7? Good. This was an informational committee meeting. We didn't have any actions to approve, per se, as far as personnel's concern, so therefore the only action coming out of our meeting is to recommend approval from the full board of the minutes of the Personnel Committee meeting held on September 7, 2023, and I do so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the minutes of the Personnel Committee meeting held on September the 7th. Any discussion? I'll just share, I think this was a really exceptional meeting, would encourage board members, if they weren't able to attend, to watch it, provided some really great feedback, and thank you, Mr. Lake, for organizing and making sure that was possible, and staff for the presentation. The Grow Your Own program, I think, is something that is really admirable, and the expansion of that in the future is exciting. For those in our community who may not be fully aware, that's a program where our students are actively engaged while they're students within our system in, in work, whether that be for the school system or other entities without our, within our community, and just super excited about that pipeline from classroom to the workplace. So, thank you.
Yes, and other, other discussion is, I mean, you really, until you do, like this committee, you know, all the committees are, are sort of in that same vein, but until you get on the committee and you start to work with the, the Human Resources Department, you just don't really appreciate what goes on, and in a, with a very small staff, the work they do, the processing that has to take place, hiring people, getting them insurance, getting them part of the retirement system, the, the school administrators do the interviewing, but setting up interviews and just that initial take, it's, it's amazing what you guys do, and my hat's off to you.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second about the minutes of the Personnel Committee meeting had held on September the 7th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is our Buildings and Grounds Committee, Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, we had a pretty full meeting yesterday. The Buildings and Grounds Committee met at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on September?
11th.
11th. Thank you. On September 11th. The meeting was called to order at 4:30 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mr. Crispin reviewed the Capital Projects list. Mr. Lee provided a status of the program capacity study. He shared that much of the program capacity study is complete, and there's one area of data in particular that still needs to be studied, which is to include all teacher and instructional assistants in each school to obtain a complete picture of program capacity. Mr. Lee shared enrollment projections for the next 10 years. He also shared that updates to the enrollment projections will be made due to September 15 enrollment data, 2022 Virginia Department of Health live birth data, and 2023 subdivision development data. Mr. Crispin shared the status of the Frederick County Middle School retaining wall. He stated the exterior retaining wall is not supporting the foundation, and that cracking on the front wall is occurring. A bid was received for $96,779 to complete the work. He also provided an update on the rear wall and stated that structural concepts evaluated the rear wall, and small surface cracks were found. Structural concepts said the small cracks are from settlement, and they don't warrant repairs at this time. Mr. Crispin provided an update on the modulators installed at Jordan Springs Elementary School and Shorando High School. Modulators are occupied at both schools, and stairs for the Jordan Springs Elementary School modular deck are being fabricated. They expect them to be finished in the near future. Mr. Kenny provided updates about the construction project at Indian Hollow Elementary School. He shared which areas were complete and that the 5th grade wing is now under construction. The anticipated completion is by the week of September, September 25th. This project is ahead of schedule. Mr. Kenny provided updates about the construction project at James Wood High School. He shared which areas were complete and that footers and foundation for the gym addition started the week of September 5th. Mr. Kenny also provided information about the issue with fire alarms at the school and corrective measures that were taken to help prevent this in the future. Mr. Lee provided an update about the Rappahannock Electric Co-op requesting a right-of-way across Route 7, across the Route 7 frontage of Millbrook High School and Red Bud Run Elementary School for a new 138 kilovolt transmission line. REC will work with Frederick County Public Schools to achieve the least impact possible to both schools. They will avoid impacting the school day and events with construction activity. Mr. Lee also shared that the access road that was on Red Bud Run's fire lane has been relocated, and there should be no need, there should be no interference between this project and VDOT's Route 7 project. Mr. Lee stated the land needed for the right-of-way is remote and will not interfere with any future addition onto the end of Millbrook High School. REC will work with us to provide sufficient notification to DEQ to define the work, to allow us to monitor the work and to meet other MS4 requirements. Consideration is being offered for this right-of-way. Mr. Lee shared that Shenandoah Valley Electric Co-op is providing power to the new radio tower located on the property of Gainesboro Elementary School and is requesting an easement for their power line. Additional information about this request will be, will be, will be provided once received from S V E C. Mr. Lee shared that the owner of the Winchester and Western Railway, OmniTrax, leases a railway siding from F C P S at the Facility Services Warehouse, and the lease is due for renewal at the end of September. F C P S is working with our attorney to update the terms for this lease. The attorney is also working with adjacent property owners to ensure that they have no objection to the lease siding, as was done for the original lease. Mr. Lee stated, if the lease is not renewed by the end of September, it will go month to month until renewed. Ms. Rinker provided an update regarding the donation of a pavilion at Orchard View Elementary School for an outdoor learning space. Orchard View Elementary will hold a dedication ceremony for the pavilion in conjunction with Subaru of Winchester, as allowed by F C P S policy for business partnerships. Subaru of Winchester will also purchase benches for use inside and around the structure. Mrs. Curry provided information about the Community Eligibility Provision, C E P. C E P is a non-pricing meal service option for schools and school districts in low-income areas. It allows schools to serve breakfast and lunch at no cost to all enrolled students without collecting household applications. Mrs. Curry shared information about school eligibility, the benefits of C E P, how C E P increases participation for both breakfast and lunch, and how it reduces the stigma associated with free and reduced-priced meals. Mrs. Curry also provided an overview of how C E P works. Dr. Hummer shared information about a proposed amendment to Policy 726P, Operations and Finance Facilities Planning, that will add explicit language regarding the board's involvement with the planning, design, and construction phases of a construction project that will be added to this policy. The meeting then adjourned at 5:45 PM. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Do board members have any questions about what was covered at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on September 11? Okay, we have a few action items, Mr. Chairman. The committee recommends the full board consider approving the Rappahannock Electric Company right-of-way request.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded, that the full board approve the Rappahannock Electric Co-op right-of-way request. This is something that, as you know, we discussed in closed session during, during the committee as well. Any further discussion?
Just for the benefit of other board members and the public, there are plans and plats and all of that in the documents on board docs, if people would like to review those, but basically the transmission line would, is an easement that would run parallel to Route 7 as close to the road as possible, and it would service kind of needs. It's, it's needed. Upgrade is needed in that area.
Wonderful. All right, appreciate your work on that. Mr. Comstock, we have a motion that has been made and seconded. If there's no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the committee would recommend the full board consider approving Subaru of Winchester providing a pavilion for an outdoor learning space at Orchard View Elementary School.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded, that the full board approve a learning space provided by Subaru of Winchester at Orchard View Elementary School. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
I'd like to recognize Subaru of Winchester and Ms. Rinker for collaborating on all this. It speaks volumes when F C P S administrators can get with the community and make this learning experience better for our, our children, and, you know, come together collaboratively as a community to help facilitate that. So, thank you to both y'all, and I know there's a lot of other people out there that, that's really put a lot of effort into this, so thank you to everybody. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Atkins. If there's no further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just echo that sentiment. We're appreciative for Ms. Rinker's work on this, but also for, for Mr. Williams and for all of our community partners that step up and, and help our schools, you know, create opportunities and spaces and provide for needs that, that we have that can enhance our learning experiences for all children. So, we're really appreciative. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Comstock. All right, all in favor of approving the outdoor learning space at Orchard View Elementary School provided by Subaru of Winchester, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the committee recommends the full board consider adopting changes to Policy 726P, Operation and Finance Facilities Planning.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and properly seconded, that the full board consider changes to Policy 726P. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lake?
First want to read what the changes are, and then have a few comments. The changes that are proposed are as follows. For all contracted construction and renovation projects authorized by the school board, the school board through its Buildings and Grounds Committee shall be reasonably informed during the pre-construction and construction phases of the project, in a manner to ensure that the board members have the opportunity to participate in the planning, design, and construction phases of the project. So that's what we're adding new to this, to this project. So, Dr. Hummer, I would like to ask you the how. How does a, we, I'll start with that first. How does a school board committee, let's say Buildings and Grounds, participate in the design of a new school?
Thank you, Mr. Lake. So there's many different phases that come along with the building of a new school or the renovating of a new school, and the first phase of that is making sure that we're complying with all code that come along with ADA compliance, other building codes. So those are going to come out of a recommendation from myself, and there's not going to be So those are going to come out of a recommendation from myself, and there's not going to be a lot of conversation around those codes because there's not a lot of flexibility. However, you all need to be informed on what those codes are, as well as the specs of the different projects that we have planned and, and being presented to you all. Secondly, as we are designing and building out any sort of renovations or buildings, you all need to be informed on that. These are your buildings. These are your schools, and there are going to be recommendations that come out of, from our department in regards to safety, making sure that we create conducive learning environments for our students, and also that we are making appropriate spaces for our students so that we are not hindering what our, our final end game is, which is to create more 21st century spaces for our students. And you all need to be informed on that every step of the way. And there might just be information that is presented to you all in a Buildings and Grounds Committee, but there is feedback that needs to be received from you all in regards to different specs as we are designing those buildings and moving forward. As I've mentioned to you all, Mr. Lake, and again, hopefully you all feel this, as my tenure here in Frederick County is, I'm, I'm fully informing you all in regards to all of the decisions we're making as a school division, as there's a lot on a day-to-day. And I just want to make sure that you all are fully informed in regards to the buildings that are coming up and being constructed, as well as you saw from this Buildings and Grounds Committee. We, we have a lot going on in regards to growth in this school division, so we definitely are going to have a lot more conversations of different renovations and projects moving forward.
I guess, I guess my question for the, for the board is that we, we pay millions of dollars to professional architect companies. When we have a project, we do an RFP, and it goes out and architect companies bid on it, and we tell them that we want a brand-new elementary school, and it has to house 700 children. And it's going to be 140,000 square feet, something like that. And then they, they go to work, and then they come back with a reasonable rendition of what they think our specs were, because we give them specifications of what we want, classroom size, access, whatever. Of course, ADA and all that stuff. I guess I'm just confused. I got, I got an issue with the one word. I have, I have an issue with one word in what that's the, what I read. We will participate in the design. The architect companies, Dr. Hummer, bring back to us their first cut, let's say, their first rendition, and it comes back, I'm assuming, in your staff through Buildings and Grounds and the, not Buildings and Grounds, through Facilities Management, and those are reviewed there and then brought forward to the school board for, for presentation, like saying, you know, this is a phase and this is where we're going through. But I will tell you, at no time during my term on, on the board have I, can I come forward and say that I have participated in the design of a school. I haven't. And quite frankly, I don't feel unqualified to design a school. This was a school. I went to school here, in this building. I couldn't design a school. I have no, I have no background in that. So I think that is the one word where I'm really stumbling to say that we are changing a policy to say that some school board, like committee, will be actively involved in the design of a future school. I'd like to have your take on that.
Yes, sir. I think the one word that sticks with me in, in regards to this amendment is the informed piece. I want to make sure that you all are informed, because you are absolutely right. Yes, I have feedback and input based on my experience as a previous educator, as well as a superintendent, but I'm going to be relying on our Buildings and Grounds folks, our construction folks, and our architects, and our, and our, our building folks in regards to design of a building. But you all need to be informed of that. If there is a, a spec that they are proposing for you all, and it doesn't go in the direction that you are envisioning us going in, you, at the end of the day, this is your building. And I want to make sure that there is no room for error there in regards to how you are being informed. And even if it's just here, the specs, this is what this is going to look like. And there, there is a lot that goes into the designing of buildings. You're absolutely right, Mr. Lake. But I want to make sure that you are informed every step of the way in regards to the design and what goes into those buildings, not to belabor the process, but to make sure that you are informed every step of the way.
How about when the first contact with the architect company, we, we, we selected a company, they go off, they're going to do what, draw complicated drawings, and when they come back, those meetings, are they, are we leaning towards the school board maybe at that point being involved to see those drawings early, Mr. Monk, Mr. Comstock? Is that the, is that the take you all get, that you want it earlier in the process?
I think during that process, and Dr. Hummer, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there are a lot of stakeholders involved. There are teachers, there are administrators, there are a lot of people in those groups, and the verbiage here, she'll have the opportunity to participate. It's just, it's just, I think, opening it up to allow board members to be involved during some of those meetings as well, so that we don't end up with the final product that we don't even know what it is. We can say, "We were involved, we were at the meeting where this was discussed, we observed the stakeholders and heard their voices, saying this was important in the design, and it allows us, as a board, to further stand behind the project that is being constructed." I don't want to get in there, I'm no designer, I'm no architect, I'm not trying to say we need to do this, this, and this, but it allows us, as a board, the opportunity, or more so, it ensures that we have that opportunity to be reasonably informed and to be able to participate during that process, so that as it progresses and the, the product is built, and we have questions from community members, they can't come back and say, "I've been on this board for however many years and I've never been a part of the design work." You know? I think that's where I am.
Can I make another, can I give an example, Mr. Lake? So with our, our current schools across Frederick County, the majority of them, not all of them, are, are one-story buildings. So if we wanted to build a school with six stories, because the architect said that a lot of our schools are going in that direction so that we can add more buildings to our grounds, you all need to know about that. And I don't want to get to the, and that's, that's a reality, that they are starting to build more schools up rather than out because of land and, and having space. So I want to make sure that, that's, that's a prime example. I don't want to get to the final phase of that project and say, "Oh, by the way, this is going to be a six-story building," and then you all say, "I had no idea." So I just want to make sure that, again, the, the word in this policy, and then, again, will, will of the board, if we want to adjust any other language, they're more than happy to consider that. I think the biggest piece is informed, and I want to make sure that you are informed every step of the way, so you know what's going into these buildings, so that you know what that end product is, and you're able to speak to your constituents as you get questions in regards to the design of these buildings as well.
Yeah, I think, I went up to the renovation project at James Wood, and I went into the trailer, the construction trailer, and they took me in that little back room, that's a special place, and showed me the, the architect drawings. This book that is humongous must have 300 pages in it, and I don't understand the first page. I mean, it's architect stuff. It's drawings, it's either ceilings and walls and concrete and, and plumbing and wiring, and, and it's architect stuff. And, and to say that, you know, at the high level, I totally agree, we, and informed is a good, great word for you, and I want to be informed along the way, but there's nobody up here that's going to spend, you know, half of a, of a full-time job digging through all that and, and architecting a building. I mean, and it just seems to say, this seems to say to me, participate, participate in the planning, design, and construction phases. And that just seems to say that to me. That's, that's all.
Mr. Atkins.
So, my take on this is that we are elected by our constituents, and they want to be informed, they want to have their input. Yeah, we can farm out our designs to architects, and that's what we pay them for. You're right. With, nobody up here is a professional, PE, and nobody's an architect up here. However, not saying all future boards will have this, I am in construction. I'm not going to go in there and try to change what they're doing. I'm a safety guy. I work on construction site safety. I'm not an architect, I don't go in there and do that, but we do have to inform our, our stakeholders within the community of what's going on, and if there's an outside contractor who's coming in to build this, who better than to say what we want in our schools than the board members sitting up here who have a pulse on the community? You know, and what we've talked about is different ways that projects are completed. And I know you've been attending these, these Building and Grounds Committee meetings, where we talk about the difference between CMAR and Design-Build, and there's positives and negatives to both sides of this. You know, CMAR keeps you on budget, where Design-Build, you may go over budget, but you'll get exactly what you have at the end. With CMAR, it could change a little bit here and there during the, the design of the project. You know, and when those small changes come about, I think we should have a saying, "Well, I don't really think that's going to be conducive to a learning environment, and I don't think that would help us out with what our needs are," instead of just leaving it to an architect out there when we can go ahead and, you know, talk to our professional staff out here, our teachers, our administrators, and get their input and kind of come back as a board and vote on that.
I think.
Mr. Comstock.
Mr. Chairman, two things. One, Dr. Hummer, correct me if I'm wrong, but this was drafted by legal, correct?
That is accurate, sir, yes. I, I had consultation with them in regards to what we were looking for, and they provided this for us, correct?
Okay. And two, I think, just a constituent example for the benefit of the board, you know, during the renovation of James Wood, during that design phase of the project, a constituent came forward with a very specific concern regarding something, and I tried to, you know, forward that to administration and to the proper channels at that time, and it was already too late, it was already beyond that. And I know we have stakeholder groups, and there's a lot of feedback that's gathered, but it would provide, I think, an opportunity where if there are things we could hear, we have heard from constituents or from whoever, even our own experiences, we could, at those meetings where we're being reasonably informed and educated on what's going on and brought up to date on, hey, here's where we are, we could bring up, it would just create that opportunity for us to bring up, hey, you know, I had a constituent that said this, can you address that for me? Can you answer that? Rather than having to say, oh, we're already beyond that, it's too late, it's nothing that, you know, that type of thing is.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I do, I, I agree with that. Don't have any issue with that. I guess I'm just cautious about changing policies. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Hummer, I don't think what we're putting in this policy is going to change the way you're approaching this.
Correct.
Informed is still informed. Reporting along the way is still reporting. So, again, I, I just, it's, it is reassuring to know that legal has reviewed this. It just seems, you know, I don't know, it just, I'm just cautious about it. I'm going to support it, but just, I just wanted to raise my concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Dr. Hummer?
Mr. Chair, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Lake. I do want to add one little other piece here, Mr. Chair and Mr. Lake, is keep in mind, it's have the opportunity to participate in those three phases. It's not that you have to participate, it's giving that opportunity. Still understand your sentiment, Mr. Lake, but I just want to be very clear, I know that word, as you shared, might add an additional layer to that, but I want to make sure we're reading the whole sentence. Have the opportunity to participate. I want to provide you that opportunity and make sure that you all stay fully informed. I just want to make sure I'm very clear on that as well.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer, and appreciate the comments, Mr. Lake, Mr. Atkins, Mr. Comstock, and Dr. Hummer. I know this is something that I'm interested in, and we've talked about it in Building and Grounds Committee meetings. For me, it goes to the point of buy-in in, in support of what we're doing. You know, I can think of a number of projects that we've been engaged in while I've been on the board, one is this room, that have not necessarily involved certain stakeholder groups. I think about the safety of this room, and there were certain groups that were not involved in this overhaul, that I think as a board, had we been engaged in that process, and not to get into too many details, would have been different. I could go on others that are maybe more lightning-rotish, but I don't think that's helpful. What I do think this policy does for us, and you talked about it, it's not really changing the way that we approach it, and I am appreciative of Dr. Hummer and Mr. Comstock and the facilities and Mr. Goodwin's approach to our Building and Grounds Committee meetings under his leadership. But I, to your point earlier, I don't believe that is the same way that it's happened before. So I see this as cementing in place and policy, no matter whether it's us here on the dais or Dr. Hummer and, and his role or others in, in other roles, ensuring that we've got what I feel now is a good approach to it through the committee on a long-term basis. And so that's why I'm supporting it, why I asked that we look into it and appreciative of the consideration of it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lake. Other discussion? All right. Let's do a roll call vote. It's been made and seconded that we vote to approve Policy 726P or the amendment to it. That's before us in the agenda. And so that is the motion before us, and Madam Clerk, if we do a quick roll call.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
And Mr. Monk?
Yes. All right. Motion carries. Policy 726P is adopted.
Mr. Chairman, finally, I would recommend approval of the minutes from the Buildings and Grounds Committee Meeting held on September 11th, 2023.
Is there a second? All right. I'll, I'll second the motion, and Mr. Atkins, I believe you have a correction.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes as presented, to move, just, you know, for clarity, I'd like to change September 12th to September 11th for more accurate.
The minutes are correct.
Minutes are correct.
On the report. I typed it this morning.
All right.
I already checked them.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know that was just yesterday, so a really quick turnaround, thank you, Madam Clerk, for speed, turning around that quickly. Thank you, Mr. Atkins, for attention.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Okay. Wonderful. I was getting ready to ask, you did it before I could add. That's wonderful. So we have a motion and a second before us to approve the amendments, which do have the correct date, and any dis-
Second.
Oh, it's a third now, so we'll, we've got motion and a second, any discussion on the motion to approve the amendments. All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, if I can get my wits about me. Next on our agenda here is some items that we've already covered in our consent agenda, but want to bring attention to some proclamations that the school board reviewed and signed during our, previously. And one is in relation to National School Lunch Week, which will be held October the 9th through the 13th. And so I want to recognize and draw attention to National School Lunch Week and the work that our folks within our nutrition services programs do and have done for the last 70 years, and so super thankful for the, the work that they are doing in providing nutritious and healthy meals to our young people all throughout Frederick County Public Schools. So hope, join us in celebrating that and thanking those folks within your child's community's schools, October the 9th through the 13th. The next is another proclamation around National Bus Safety Week, and Frederick County Public Schools, our buses have about 750 runs covering more than 11,500 miles a day, or 2.4 million miles a year. And I believe there's been conversation before this, Hester, about that's back and forth across-
Two round trips from New York to San Francisco and back.
Yeah, that, that is wild. So, want to acknowledge that it's estimated that about 300 car, 350,000 cars nationwide ignore flashing red lights and pass school buses loading and unloading. And so we want to ensure that our young people and learners are safe every day as they transport back and forth to school, and want to recognize that and bring attention to motorists and, as we get into a new school year, want to be cognizant of those folks that are crossing the, the street sometimes for the very first time. And so appreciate the work that our bus drivers do and, and our community in keeping our young people safe as well. And then a bullying prevention month, the month of October. I know many of us have, have had constituents reach out about that in schools sometimes, just in the nature of young people being together is, is a place where we, I want to make sure our students feel safe, not only physically, but also emotionally as well. And so I know our board supports, supports the work that our staff and our parents and our community does to make sure each of our students feel comfortable at school and have a community that they can rely- that they can rely on. And so, this board recognizes October is our bullying prevention month. And so, thank you, board members and staff, for making these proclamations possible. With that, we'll move on to board member comments. Are there any?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
Didn't get to do it earlier, but I want to welcome all of our new staff, especially those who have stayed. Welcome to FCPS. You know, glad to have you part of the team.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Mr. Lake?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I'll start off with Indian Hollow. Charlie, we're thinking about you. Fight's a good fight. We have a lot of good things coming up in the next couple of weeks, usually, you know, for me, sports-related. We have the James Wood Hanley football game is next Friday, the 22nd. Back in the day, not a lot of people in this room know about it, but back in the day, that was it. That was the game. There was no Shorando, there was no Millbrook. It was James Wood Hanley, and for me, that's a special event. I'll be there, and if you want to see something special, that's one to see. The Shorando Homecoming Parade, that's something else that is kind of special down the streets of Stevens City. They gather, I think, about 5 o'clock, they come off of a side street, and you've got fire departments, you've got the Sheriff's Department, you've got the horse, you know, the Shorando horse, you've got Mark Mosley and Mayor Charles from Middletown riding in their convertible, and it's a pretty cool event to check off that week. So, I think that's the 27th. There's five varsity sports in the fall between golf and cross-country and volleyball and football. So, there's something for everybody to see, and, you know, there's nothing like watching the marching band come onto the football field to their cadence on Friday Night Lights. I mean, that's pretty special stuff. And so, that's just the other stuff that our students do. We had the recognition here tonight for the different types of competition with FFA, and then there's always our classroom stuff that we're recognizing all the time, you know, but the athletes put in quite a bit of work, too, and so, it's a pretty cool thing to see. And finally, it's a special week, 9/11. That was a big day in my life, and wearing my tie tonight. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Other comments from board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. White?
Just wanted to say thank you to our nutritional professionals. We... my daughter frequently eats lunch at school, and I always know that she's well taken care of and that the meals are nutritious, and it's not the easiest job, so I just wanted to say thank you to them. Her bus driver is excellent. There was an issue one day, and she... we weren't able to pick her up at the bus stop, and they transported her back to school even though she could have gotten off the bus, and that was something extra that the bus driver did for safety reasons. And so, I know that that's going on across the division. Welcome to our new administrative staff. We're glad to have you, and thank you to Dr. Hummer for being so transparent and so dedicated to getting us the information that we need. You started your tenure here with a promise for transparency and open communication, and every step of the way you have delivered that, and we have also seen that with your appointments. So, I look forward to the building of your cabinet, and you've done an outstanding job.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Further comments from the board? And I've talked a lot this evening, but want to thank this board and take the time to do that and recognize, I know over the past few months, we have increased frequency of meetings, and that is not lost on me, and I'm appreciative of you all taking the time and investing the time. That's not something that's in the paper, reported a whole bunch, but the time that it takes to go through the committee documents and meetings and one-on-ones and those conversations, and investing in the role of a board as well as the process that it takes to make decisions, I'm thankful for that and the work that you all do day in and day out. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's been properly seconded to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.